Today is a budget work session Tuesday, November eighteen, twenty twenty five, Domestic Relations Court.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In July of this year, we passed a tax budget earlier, about eighty-two million dollars. The ASF from everybody is ninety-seven million. We assume a lot. I took a, when I came in here in twenty-one, I took a look at the ten-year history of our county auditors. And our county auditor was always averaging with the Alpha KC, and he figured out that he was always thirteen percent conservative. So we would actually be, we would add, look at what we, what he would say and what we would get. We're always off at an average of thirteen percent. Okay, that's kind of what we started looking at. He thought that's how I was doing, moving a patch of budget. Last year, as Casey and I were looking at the auditor numbers, he's tightening, he tightened it up. So last year, what were maybe five percent, Casey? It was like, it looks like that's where we're going to be at. Even though we passed that budget at eighty-two million for July, and the ASF was ninety-seven million, we took the same assumptions of twenty twenty-four, and it's based on all the revenue and all the information we are all getting on a monthly basis. Sales tax is flat, and that's just the way it is. So we're, we're looking at this as eighty-six million at around four, four percent up instead of eighty-two million. We're thinking that the general fund's going to get about eighty-six million and some change. So I asked the board, as we looked at this, we started looking at different avenues and revenue streams. And we decided to look at, hey, why not, we thought we're sure the public would support law enforcement. That's why we did the sales tax we did. It would have alleviated fourteen million out of our general fund that we could use to help what, to help the operations elsewhere, like for the judges. And people's fault, and everyone has their own opinion of why, but the fact of the matter is, the fact is, there is no money. And now, this, so the public is aware, and everyone's aware, the ARPA funds are not here. We, we use some creative accounting measures that the federal government allowed us to do, which is lost revenue. And we moved a lot of those ARPA dollars into lost revenue, and we use the money there to put it, set aside for future projects and investments. So, you know, anybody who thinks that the mall money that we use, we invested in themselves, has nothing to do with operations. The money we use to put, set aside for the jail, I remind you again, that was a two-to-one vote, I did not support that. But that, that money was set aside to build a jail, and that has, that has nothing to do with our daily operations, how you guys pay your employees or the county, and how you run your services. So the number we're looking at is eighty-six million. The ASF is ninety-seven million, and we need your help today to see what we can and cannot do to get to where we all need to be. I was kind of hoping you guys would be before last, not first, because I do like how you guys run your organization. I know you guys, I know, you come in, you're on top of everything, and I appreciate the detail. So unfortunately, if anybody's watching, which I'm sure three people are, they just, everybody here just received the data that KC put together for the commissioners. So they're seeing this probably for the first time also, in fact, literally just now. We're just looking for open discussion to see what can you guys do to help us, to help the county, to kind of get that number down to eighty-six million. That's what we're looking for. We're also, we also, what Casey did is put in here, now these questions, how much revenue you're receiving from other grants. I know Domestic Relations is fantastic at getting grant funding and getting money. That'll mitigate the cost of the budget, of our general fund budget. And so that's kind of what this is all about. Things that we are looking at as a commission, as a board, as a county, as one of the judges actually participated here. Helping us out, and this county was hacked. Did you say hacked? We were hacked, and it was bad. And one of the judges was here and participating in that with us, which means a lot of knowledge in how our IT director handled himself, which I feel was, we could say for less than the way that we were treated as the other fifteen elected officials during that process, from the honors office. I felt like that was politicizing, it should have been. And out of the sixteen elected officials, fifteen of us all came together. And that's kind of some of the things we're looking at is IT. You know what, I tried in two thousand and one to perform a health assessment of IT. I couldn't do it, because everybody has their own fight to, everybody has their favorite IT person. But I think what we just proved is that, hopefully, that you guys don't see that we're here to take anything over. The less work for us, the better, but that's not, I don't think that's efficient government. I think what we need to do is take a look at IT and take a look at HR. We would like to see one HR department. I would like to see one IT department. Any other IT, I think we need to see how can we start consolidating a lot of the duplications that each and every elected official does. And I know it's going to be a tug-of-war, but we, at least, I'm just throwing this discussion out, and then we'll go from there. If one wants to add.
I think the, I think the issue that we learned through the, unfortunately, the hardware, is that, you know, every department has specialty software that they need for their, for their particular function and so forth. We don't have a dog in that, but it would be nice if there was a master government software that everybody could use, but that's just not the case. But when it comes to the hardware and the security system, we've not only, we've not only proven the value of the millions that were spent out of the ARPA money to get the county ready, but we've proven that the benefit of shared services, because once they got into the auditor's office, and they pushed their way into several other departments, they got stopped, because those departments were under our shield. And so at the end of the day, the, we fell all in love, it was the right thing to do. I commend those who came before me for understanding this and engaging world-class outfit to do that work. I don't know if we caused it here in Lorain County or not, but God, the city of Cleveland also went through the same thing. But we get our insurance through CCAO, and they even, they even informed us that we will not be required to acquire insurance unless we have them, unless we have them, because these things get expensive. The premiums we pay are in the tens of thousands of dollars, and the expenses that get paid are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So at the end of the day, we need to, we need to make that clear as we're looking at budget, that as you look at costs that you have in your IT area, that we, we want to provide, you know, some common, some common services in the hardware and the security, and we've included those in our budget, because they, we need to be the owner of the policy by law now. The legislature, earlier this year, evidently, there's been enough of this. They've decided to make the three commissioners the, the sole responsibility for the, for the network policy and so forth. So, and I think some of you have already been included in discussions with Todd Sharkey, who's ramping up his staff, and he'll be looking at staff that's being shed to see if there's resources there that are already in-house that we can rearrange. And then whatever our skill sets that we're short, he'll have to import those, but we have to, we have to kick it up a notch ourselves, because quite frankly, Todd, Todd is a one-man band when it comes to certain pieces and parts of this. We don't even have the backup to Todd, and, and we need to do that if we're going to provide global solutions. So the IT area is one area that we want to look at, and, and we'd like to, we'd like everybody to minimize their, their need for, for staffing and for so forth when it comes to the hardware. You're all going to need somebody that's going to manage your data entry and, and your software issues and glitches that come in from time to time, and we're not going to do that. But over time, we hope to even standardize some of the hardware, so that when we have people, we have four or five people that can know how to fix something. Okay? But that was, as the commissioner said, it was, it was very eye-opening, this whole, this whole breach thing we had, and, and we still don't know the, the total cost of it yet. It's still being, it's still being ascertained as they get people signed up for, for protection and so forth. But more than, more than just the cost, which is why we're here today, is the security of the records. And the judge made it very loud and clear in our meetings, that, you know, the type of information that you have on your clients and stuff is, it needs to be protected. And so at the end of the day, there, there's the cost issue, but there's also the security issue. And everybody should want their, their information about their clients and so forth, you know, kept in confidentiality. So that's, that's all I have to add, is the IT is one of those areas we're looking at, and we've already been told by some of the other departments, they're looking at the commissioner's budget, and that's fair game. Okay, that's fair game. But what we've done over a period, a couple of years, is that we've, we've realigned some of the stuff. It's still all general fund, okay? And we're trying, and we appear to be headed to be on budget this year, and we'll be on budget for next year. But we're doing our own staff reallocations, we're taking some of those costs into our budget. We have shed the hospitalization out to the departments, because that's also a management issue. We found that, that one of the issues and wastes that we had in our hospitalization plan was that nobody was really managing the data. We had people that shouldn't be in there, that were still in there, and there's just, nobody was processing it. So we asked you folks to do that, plus you're already budgeting for their salary, their holidays, their, their PERS. The hospitalization just, now you, now you're managing the total cost of your employees, okay? And so that money came out of the commissioner's budget, but in came the IT money and some other things for like HR that we want to do. So we're reallocating our money to be able to provide those shared services. And we're also looking for, for ways to, for ways to cut. And we are, I think at last take, we're about four or five employees short of where we were a couple of years ago. We've kind of threw attrition and reallocation of resources and stuff, and I'm proud to say we're still getting our work done.
I'd like to add that, you might not see it, but there's, we're looking at many different areas of what we do to streamline it, like the automobiles, for example. We did an analysis to determine what's, what's less expensive for the county when it comes to managing the fleet, leasing versus purchasing and maintenance costs and all that. There's little things in there behind the scenes, investment advisory, you know, the expense of our investments. We just finalized that recently. We're, we're looking at, you know, bidding, the contracts for bidding for work, having multiple bids versus single bids. You know, there, there's so many different areas that we're looking at internally, and I could go on. There's probably four or five other ones that we're working on right now, and one of the big ones is prescription drug. So we're, we're not only saying to everybody, we got to pull in our horns, and we got to, you know, the worst thing we can do is say we got to let go of good employees. And so our, my attitude is, is let's find ways to streamline and be more efficient with our money. And as well as the other two commissioners here, we're, we're looking at everything. And I can assure you that you don't see it, we're not boasting about it in the papers and all that stuff, and that's, we're, we're doing quite a bit of that work behind the scenes.
Can you put that on the screen?
Is that the first one?
One other, one other concept, I think, that helps simplify it for those that are trying to watch us and figure out what we're doing, is that in two thousand and sixteen, the budget for the county was fifty-six million dollars. Now, that was underestimated by about the same twelve, thirteen percent, you know? And it's fine to be conservative, but that habit, what it created was, we ran the county for ten months on a certain budget, and then came a ten percent, twelve, thirteen percent windfall in November, and that led to some capricious spending and so forth, that, you know, there were things that could have got done during the year that didn't get done. So that's, you know, and Commissioner Moore led the charge on that and said, well, if we, let's, let's hang our neck out. We've got a decent reserve, and, and let's, let's, let's spend based on what comes in, not just what is, you know, is on the budget. And so at the, at the end of the day, that was the last time we had the quarter percent that we just tried to renew, and the budget was fifty-six million. Today, that, today, that budget, without that, we were running, we ran this, this particular year, twenty-five, at eighty-six million. And it looks like that, you know, we had predicted in July of twenty-four that this would be the budget, and when we passed it in July of twenty-four, that twenty-six was, we didn't see a pathway to a lot of increased revenue. We did pick up a couple of million dollars in, with the real estate tax on the interior millage, but sales tax has been fairly flat. And sales tax is one of those things that when, when the economy does well, the sales tax really does well. And, and so at, losing that quarter percent, we're now trying to operate at two thousand and sixteen levels. And I only use that as a comparison, that, you know, even with the rate of inflation being what it was in the last ten years, we've kind of grown, we've grown out past that to get from fifty-six to eighty-six million. Okay? So we've got to find out what structural changes we made when we have the money and figure out, you know, how can we, how can we undo some of those, and where can we, where can we make some changes that'll have the least impact? And on a personal note, I'd like to correct the record. When I said it was going to be painful, I wasn't talking about the employees. The, the people who voted the sales tax down, I, I think it's just a continuing issue that they don't understand all that we do. And, and we, our efforts with the newsletter and emphasizing departments and what they do and stuff was an effort to, to make that outreach. And unfortunately, I don't think they have a disrespect for what we do. They just want us to somehow get it done with less money. So, but I do, I do, I do feel that this was a, this was an education issue. And I feel bad, because every department, it's going to affect the client. It's going to affect the customer, you know?
We'll see. That's what we're here for. Okay. You take that down.
Take it down.
Yeah, because if anybody wants, they can screenshot that. So this is just page one that we're looking at. What this talks about, and Casey's going to have to walk me through it, this, you, you, you did the total domestic relations budgets based without healthcare, right? You did, on this one? It shows a thirty-eight percent increase since twenty-one.
Correct, so those first, those first two lines there, in the, the orange, essentially sums up the, the lumping all, all the domestic relation, general fund budgets together.
That's the top line, right?
The, the, the top line is total, right? The, the next, the next line, the little darker orange line, that removes, because in, in twenty-five, this was the first year where all hospitalization was moved over into the individual budget. So in, in twenty, so we had apples-to-apples look. The dark orange line would be that, that comparison, where that take the backs out, the hospitalization, the life and the Medicare for, for those budgets.
So you guys see what we're looking at? You guys, your department jumped up thirty-eight percent, thirty-eight percent since twenty-one in four years. And that's kind of what, that kind of was a flag, based on a lot of the other people's increases between fifteen and sixteen and eighteen percent. And that's why, when I saw that, I thought at first the same thing you said, which is, does that include healthcare or not? It doesn't. And so what we then did is underneath it, Casey put down all your special revenue cash balances, right? Casey?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, end-of-year cash balances going back to twenty-one, and then obviously this year is just at the end of October. Is that last, that last column?
And so what, what do they have then at the end of twenty-five, five, you know, five point four million?
Correct, and, and it looks like, I mean, their, their cash, the cash balance for all the special revenue funds looks to maintain fairly flat over, over all those years. I mean, there's several, two, four, six, fifteen or so.
Because the rents I see from Domestic Relations means that you're just not getting as much as you did the year before, right? Is that what that means?
Or they, or, I mean, I don't know, but, or they, either less revenue or more, more expenditure out of each one of the accounts.
So our concern, you know, some of the concerns we're looking at is, what is there? I know you're handcuffed on a lot of these grants you get, because you can't use them for jumping out. So I don't know if you guys are mitigating, I know you are, you're probably using that to offset salaries, if you are or not, I don't know. These are things we don't know. If you take a look, then we, on the.
And I think they had to, Casey, to correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the cash balance. This is not a, this doesn't take into account whether your grants went up or down, or your expenses went up or down. It's just a cash balance. So, so it's indicated that, you know, what those balances have been over a period of time, and they appear to be pretty steady, which indicates that on, on an annual basis, the expenses and the revenue are pretty close, but we're maintaining, and you're not alone. Altogether, the, there are, there are balances of this size in a couple of other departments. And so we're looking at those dollars and saying, you know, could we examine those and figure out how to use some of those resources? We never want to give away all of our savings, but we've got to figure out, you know, how, how can we mitigate some of the cuts by using those, if, if there's an ability to use some of those special, special revenue funds?
Is there?
First of all, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, administrators. I guess I'll introduce ourselves for the record.
Excuse me, one second. We might have to take that microphone that they're using or pass it down. It's, it's picking up, but not really clear, so if you guys don't mind passing it, thanks.
Thank you. I'm Judge Frank Janik. I'm the administrative judge for the Lorain County Domestic Relations Court this year. I've brought with me today Emily Kirsch, our court administrator, Kristin Richardson, our, our finance director, and Judge Sherry Glass, and Judge Lisa Swensky, who are the other two Domestic Relations Court judges here in Lorain County. As far as, and of course, you know, the judges are most, are in the courtroom conducting business, legal business in the courtrooms, and that's why we have a court administrator and a finance director to, fiscal director to help us with budgeting issues like this. And they certainly keep track of those things. We, as judges, I will tell you, have been meeting in the last few weeks to discuss and finalize our twenty-six budget. We have not finalized that process yet. When we were invited last week to come over and talk to you about our twenty-six budget, but we certainly welcome discussing our budget with you and giving you some insight into what our discussions have been thus far. We, we certainly have had an increase in expenses that our court administrator and fiscal director have been keeping us apprised of this year. Some of those things have been our, our aging detention home. Our detention home for the juvenile delinquents in Lorain County was built in nineteen fifty-seven. That is, I think, makes it distinguish as maybe the oldest, unfortunately, juvenile detention home that we have in the state. And certainly, there are expenses with the building of that age, which I will let my court administrator and fiscal director tell you about, that we've incurred this year. We have had trends in the juvenile delinquency cases that unfortunately have caused an overcrowding situation at the detention home this year, which in turn causes us some overtime that, with the staff there, and they can tell you more about the specifics. which in turn causes us, uh, some overtime, um, that, with the staff there, and they can tell you more about the specifics on that, along with juvenile, uh, mental health issues that we have, uh, seen the juveniles of Lorraine County experience that have caused hospitalizations while kids are at the detention home, which causes us to have juvenile detention officers that have to stay with a child in the hospital. And then that leaves us a short staff at the detention home. We have to call in more staff. And again, unfortunately, more staffing costs and overtime when those situations happen, which have increased. Uh, certainly, the inflation in the economy have caused all of our supplies unfortunately to increase. So, we have had a significant increase in our expenses unfortunately, uh, in the past year. And Kristin and Emily, if you want to give more specifics to those increases?
Yes. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, one thing I want to highlight first of all is that we are actually two courts. I know that we're referred to as the Domestic Relations Court, but a lot of the public may not realize that we encompass two courts. We're the Domestic Relations Court, and that handles divorces, dissolutions, um, end-of-marriage type actions. And then we also have the Juvenile Court. And the Juvenile Court is where we have a detention home, a probation department. We maintain our own clerk's office. So, um, when we're looking at the budget, it, it's two courts. And I think that's something really important to keep in mind. Um, one of the things that we've had is overcrowding in our detention home. Judge Janik mentioned that our detention home is the oldest in the state. It has 28 cells for males. That's for all of Lorraine County. Throughout this last year, we have had many times, I would say more often than not, we have more than 28 juveniles in the detention home. Because of that, we have juveniles that have to sleep in the day room, which then creates a situation where we need more staff because staff has to be in the room with them 24/7. And depending on how many juveniles we may have in that room, we may need to staff. Uh, Judge Janik also mentioned about juveniles and the hospitalization. So, uh, in the last couple of years, there has been a mandate from Governor DeWine that when a juvenile experiences crisis, instead of calling ESS, it's MRSS. And that's the Mobile Response and Stabilization Services. Sorry, I had to look at my sheet. Um, and so, what happens is somebody will come out to the detention home and does an assessment. If they determine that that youth needs psychiatric hospitalization, we have to transport that juvenile to the deten-, to the hospital. Um, that requires two detention officers. Then while they're at the hospital, the hospital, their EPAT services is looking for a placement for that juvenile. That can take up to five days. So, during that time, we have two juvenile detention officers at the hospital with the youth, which is pulling them from an already overcrowded detention home. Sometimes we have more than one youth that's at the hospital at the same time, and it could be different hospitals throughout Lorraine and Cuyahoga County. So, because of this, we have had to add four JDO positions. That's Juvenile Detention Officers. It's important that we maintain the safety and security of the building, and because of that, we have had to increase staff at the detention home. Do you want to, I'll let Kristin talk about some of the other expenses.
Do you mind if we, could we handle a couple of questions as we go along?
Absolutely. Yes.
You know, I don't want to lose my thought.
Yeah.
But could you explain why it is that we have to have two detention officers per juvenile?
Because the juveniles that are in the detention home now are, they're the juveniles that should be in the detention home. And so, that's for the safety and security of the youth and the community. Because when they're at a hospital, they're going to the emergency department. There are members of the public there. And it's necessary to have two for, to make sure that it's secure. It's also because the hospital staff have informed us that they will not be providing the security for the youth. So, it's also the hospital requiring, "Hey, we need two people because these are violent offenders. They're in, you know, handcuffs and shackles." So, a lot of it is with the hospital as well. Um, local police departments do the same thing. Whenever they have to have an offender go to the hospital, you'll see two officers there as well.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, um, ex-girl neighbor used to work in, and, uh, there for 24 years.
Wow.
And, um, during COVID, they only had two people in there because everybody was sent home. Actually, I know I get ripped off. People break into my home and juvies, and still can't find them. But anyway, that's my issue. So, um, also is my understanding that each and every county domestic relations makes the decisions on what level of crimes in which, um, juvies are held. For example, I was told that in Cuyahoga County, a kid steals a car, they don't even put him in DR, and they're, and they're juvie. But I've heard recently that you guys have changed.
Yes. Yes.
Have to increase the level in which to put somebody into the home. So, therefore, as you guys start to put people, children, or juvies, the worst of the worst, whatever you want, you know, whatever, in, then therefore, by doing that, and each county DR makes that decision, then we have to hire more employees, right, in order to cover that? In the meantime, I hear you guys are going to get grant money to build a new domestic relations holding, whatever.
Detention home. Yes.
Not somewhere for you guys to hang out, but, you know. So, um, so now, um, what I see is an increase in expenses, an increase in salaries, an increase maybe in crime. You know, there are arguments being made that the judges, you know, are throwing, are, are doing the no cash bonds and letting people out. And I'm hearing right now, you guys said, "No, just the opposite. We're putting these people that are the worst of the worst, and we're putting them in, and now we don't have any money to build a juvie home. We don't have enough money to build a jail. We have no money to even pay cell." I mean, this is the cycle that I'm in, and I'm trying to, I'm looking for you all to help us to say, "What do you have that you can do to help us so that we're not in court fighting?" And I don't want to go that path. So, I really am pushing this on you guys to say, "Tell us how to trim." We're not asking to cut. What can you do to trim? And not today, but basically what I want to hear is, okay, what's going on? Hear from us. And then you, you know, maybe, probably the two of you will be working with Casey.
Yes.
To give us something. Because the last thing I want to do is, in the last meeting of the year, saying, "Sorry, this is what we're gonna do because nobody's gonna talk to the Commissioners." So, what we're trying to do is open communication. Let's have a conversation publicly first, and then, you know, let the sausage be made between these, you know? That's what I'm, I'm just letting you know what I'm...
Ms. Kirsch, can I have the microphone?
Absolutely.
There you go, Judge.
Good morning, everyone. Judge Glass here. I will keep my comments short because, um, this year Judge Janik is Admin Judge, so Judge Swensky and I are just sitting here supporting. Want you all to know that we are absolutely, um, talking about this. We've been, I think Judge Janik or someone said we've been talking about this for a couple of weeks. In fact, we always talk about it. You know, we've been talking about it just about in every judge meeting, um, about how we can cut costs, how we can do things better, how we can be more efficient. It's just in the last couple of weeks that we have really been digging in and diving into, you know, the budget plans and what we proposed back in spring, and how we can make that better. So, we are absolutely on page with you. And we've, and I will, uh, hand it over to our Fiscal Expert and our Court Administrator to explain and jump in when necessary as to how we can, how we can help be more efficient, how we can make this right. Um, but what I wanted to jump in and talk about was exactly what you said about this cycle. There is, and I want you all to know, I know they, we know this, the public doesn't know this, because there's this huge misconception that juveniles don't get locked up. You know, that is not our goal to lock up kids, right? But it is happening, and it happens often. It happens a lot in Lorraine County because we have to. We have to look at these, you, you said we have the discretion about locking, um, juveniles up. We, whether it's from, and I, I honestly can't sit here and point to the code section or the, uh, policy procedure that says it, but the Supreme Court, um, whether it's a mandate or a suggestion, the Supreme Court, ODYS, um, all of the juvenile entities tell us we have to have some type of system, uh, where juveniles are admitted to the detention home. A system, a fair system. So, we have what we call the DSI, Detention Screening Instrument, so that everyone, every juvenile is treated e- equally. Doesn't matter your, your, uh, color, your income, your, whether you have one parent, three parents, doesn't matter. We have the screening tool, and that's what we, um, go through when we are admitting juveniles. Of course, we apply common sense as well. Um, and that DSI changes, um, based on the needs and trends in Lorraine County. The DSI changed when we realized that, um, stealing, a juvenile stealing a car once in a while, um, that may not have put him into the detention home five years ago, became something much, much more in Lorraine County and surrounding counties. It became this scheme amongst juveniles. They were banding together. There were groups of them. They were, um, putting, uh, plans together, thoughts together. They have criminal tools. They have, uh, items where they're going out at night, and they are stealing vehicles, taking vehicles on joy rides, hurting people, hurting themselves, and just, it became much more than just a juvenile stealing, you know, mom's car for a couple of hours and coming back. Much more. So, we had to change our DSI instrument because of what Lorraine County needed. So, yes, in those situations, um, guns i- in the hands of juveniles, we're not tolerating it. And I'm not sure, you know, I, I see all over Facebook and social media where it, you see, "Oh, they're gonna get another smack on the hand." I don't think so. We are not giving them smacks on the hands. We are going through our DSI instrument, applying common sense, and those juveniles who are putting our public, our community in harm's way, they are getting locked up because that's what common sense dictates, that's what the law dictates, and that's what our DSI instrument dictates. So, we are seeing more juveniles, more violent juveniles detained. So, absolutely, they are getting locked up, and that is increasing costs. That is causing us to need more JDO, uh, Juvenile Detention Officers. And because they are also, also that vulnerable population. We've got 13-year-olds who are committing serious crimes, but they are 13-year-olds. So, we have that extra layer of protection that we have to keep the community safe, but we have to keep them safe as well. So, with the mental health mandate, that was huge, and that was a change. So, that caused our, uh, uh, an increase in what we had to spend because we have to make sure that when a juvenile seems to be in a crisis, mental health crisis, five years ago, so many years ago, they didn't have to immediately go to a hospital or be ass-, be assessed. Now, all of that is happening. So, I completely, sorry, I'm talking too much. I'm gonna hand this over. But I completely agree and believe that is such a huge effect and impact on our budget because juveniles, uh, are being detained because we have to protect the community. More being detained. The age of our detention home, the needs for, for more JDOs, the, the need to change our DSI and have more, uh, space in the detention home, all of that is increasing our costs. And we are here, all of us, not just the Admin Judge, but all of us, to say, we are actively looking at our budgets. We want to talk to you. We want to go through, whether today or another day, line by line, and figure out where we can do better. There are some areas we cannot budge on. We, we have to keep our juvenile safe in our facilities, our staff safe, and we have to make sure the right kids are going into the detention home. So, there are certain things we can't budge on, but there are absolutely other areas where we want to be creative, we want to be more efficient, and we, we have done a lot of things. So, again, I'm gonna pass the mic and, um...
Maybe Ms. Richardson can share some of those, uh, expenses that we've incurred at the age of detention home that, that we've sought grants for to fix in the last year, but, but have cost us nonetheless.
I think what's important right now, though, and, and what you guys are getting to, is we talk about all the increases, right? But we are reducing our budget. The tax budget that we turned in, we are evaluating. We are making cuts to it. We have not finalized them, but we plan on doing so by eliminating positions, restructuring departments, not filling vacancies. Um, we had about a handful of people say that they're gonna retire. We're looking at all of those positions. We do that all year round. Every time someone leaves, that's our opportunity to really evaluate what the court needs, what the department needs, and do we really need to fill this position? Is it with a full-time, a part-time, or at all? So, I just want to make it clear that we are not going forward asking for our tax budget amount. We are cutting. We are adjusting.
From the, from the tax, from the tax budget?
Correct.
We'll talk about that. Why don't you talk about the expenses?
Well, the tax, yeah, but the tax budget amount was at 97 million from everybody.
Correct.
And so, I mean, there's just, have, have you guys looked at your indigent fees for attorney fees? Because that's up 126% over four years.
Yes, but we can talk about, I mean, like Kristin, talk about what we've done.
Well, no, what I'm saying is this, we got like 20 minutes. I want to keep it enough. I'd rather see you guys put people away, so, um, or not.
Yeah.
But those are some of the things we're looking at when I, um, talk to some of the judges in regards to the, um, Public Defender's Office.
Not the indigent fees, although they've made...
No, we get 80% of it, but that, but, you know, I didn't like, I didn't like, well, somebody came in, and I won't say who, uh, said, "Oh, we got 100% once." It's, it's gonna go back, I'm telling you, it's gonna go back to 50%. And we spent 4.8 million. That means 2.8 million, so that's coming. Even the last year, we got reimbursed all but 800. It cost us 800,000 out of our general fund. But when you, when I look at history and see how it went from 500,000 to 1.2 on indigent fees, I mean, it's, I don't know who that's at for because you guys are domestic relations. Is that for juvies? Do the juvie's parents get off the hook because they're minors and they don't have lawyers? Or do the parents? I mean, these are things we don't know.
Well, one, one thing that, um, again, I, I would like you all and of course the public to, to understand is the whole two courts. We have Domestic Relations Court, but so much of what we do is Juvenile Court. So, we're dealing with juveniles. Juveniles are per se indigent. Juveniles coming in, um, for the delinquency cases, they're getting attorneys. We're not prosecuting, juveniles are not getting prosecuted without legal counsel. So, every juvenile who comes in is getting an attorney, whether it's misdemeanor or felonies. And that's something that, if a juvenile, not the parent, but the juvenile, it, the parent's income isn't necessarily looked at for that. Some, we, we can look at that for reimbursement if the, the parent gets an attorney. They don't always get attorneys, but the juveniles always have to have an attorney. And the juveniles can't pay us back. Uh, they are per se indigent. They get a free attorney, and, and that's it. Um, our CPS cases, remember, the umbrella of Juvenile Court, our CPS cases, Child Services cases, we are dealing with, you know, common sense tells us if, if a family's involved with CPS, we are dealing with usually a very low-income, low means family. So, we have, you know, moms and dads who, um, they are potentially losing their children, usually because they don't have housing. They don't have income. They... So, those individuals are getting attorneys because they qualify, um, and they're not able to pay those back. So, Domestic Relations Court, whole different ballgame, whole different ballgame. Those individuals, those fees are getting paid. They're, because those in, they're married, they're filed, they're, uh, they have a filing fee they have to pay. They get court costs. Those, that, those individuals that we're dealing with are usually a little more stable. They, they, they're married. They have finance, financial things that have to be, um, separated, and we're getting fees for that. Where they're not getting court-appointed counsel. They're, none of that is usually happening under, in the domestic world. And of course, and, uh, our Fiscal Experts can talk about how, um, we share that with Tom Orlando's office. Um, so, the Domestic Relations Clerk. So, we have a lot of dealings with what's going on with his office, with our domestic cases. But our juvenile cases, it's a whole different ballgame, and it doesn't surprise me that those keep increasing because we're dealing with juveniles and we're dealing with, um, we're not dealing with individuals, uh, like we are in the domestic world. We're dealing with individuals who are at the lower or lowest income brackets, and they are getting court-appointed counsel in all of the Child Services cases and all of the delinquency cases. Um, another, uh, area would be our, the one cases that we deal with that have, um, adults, um, not juveniles, is our child support contempt cases. Those individuals are in court because they can't pay their child support. So, and they're looking at jail time. So, they absolutely are, um, they have a right to court-appointed counsel, and most of the time they qualify. So, boom, there we go again. Even though it's an adult, not a juvenile, we are dealing with individuals who are the, on the lower, lowest end of the income. So, those are the individuals. And again, I'm just talking because the umbrella over Juvenile Court, those are the type of cases that we're dealing with. So...
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
Can you hear me? All right. I just want to say a couple of things because I've, I've been talked about a lot. Thank you, mostly positive. Thank you, Commissioners.
I appreciate what you, I appreciate your participation. You were awesome.
I, I appreciate that. It was, uh, it was an interesting, it was an interesting couple of months. So, I just want to say a couple of things. Um, I don't want to go into the court-appointed thing because I think ultimately, if we did a deep dive in that, we would see that we're getting a bargain from the court-appointed lawyers. I know it doesn't seem that way, but promise you that if we go further into that, you'll see that the court-appointed attorneys versus a public defender's office is probably a bargain to the county. That thankfully, the court-appointed... that thankfully the court-appointed attorneys haven't caught on to. But just to, but just to say this, I appreciate you trying to educate the public about the circumstances that you are in. And we understand that, and we are going to try to do what we can do. As Kristen said, we are already looking at cuts. We do it all the time. So every time, as Judge Glass just said, we do child support contems with adults, I have to decide whether I'm gonna put that guy in for ninety days at ninety dollars a day in the county jail, eighty-one hundred dollars if my math serves me, or do I let him stay out for another month or try to give me four hundred bucks? So it's just, it's something that is a calculus almost all the time, with the exception of gun cases for juveniles and the KIA conspiracies, which are almost no brainers. I mean, we're looking at that, we're locking them up. We're not gonna let them create havoc out in the community just because we have to put somebody on overtime. So I just want to say that we are open, like, we've always been open to an HR department. We don't have one. Here's our HR department. Poor Kristen is, I mean, so we are, we have been open to that, and I think we have expressed that before.
We are on board. We even got rid of our HR person.
I don't remember if you recall, but last year when we met, that's when we first learned about how we wanting to centralize IT and HR. At that point, we were, we were all in, we're still all in. We go to the lunch and learns that your HR director does. She's great. But we actually eliminated our HR position after meeting with the commissioners and learning that the goal is to centralize HR. That was one of the, one of the cuts we made last year. I just wanted, we want to centralize with the commissioners.
So we are open to those ideas. We're open to anything that you want to come back at us. I'm just saying that you can expect some things from us. When Judge Janik and I came in, we came in in a recession. And we had to be fiscally responsible. And sometimes it kind of hurt us because then we'd see other groups just using their money for whatever the hell they wanted to, excuse my language. But we continue to be fiscally responsible. Unfortunately, as a DR court and the juvenile court, we, our hands are gonna be tied a little bit, we're handcuffed, as you said, with some of those, with some of the employment costs, the same things that you guys see when you're trying to hire somebody and you're competing with whatever, Taco Bell or something. So we had to raise the JDOs. They were some of the lowest paid in the state, et cetera. So we're gonna do the best we can. We're not gonna play games with you. We're not gonna come in and say, here's this. You know that about me. You should know that about us. And we will work with you to try to cut, but I think at some point, because we're two courts, there's gonna be a limit to what we can do. But we are open to all of that.
For the judges, I think the word is trim, not cut.
Trim, trim, yes, there we go.
And I'll say this, our meetings have been about that. Given the expenses that we didn't completely get through, I want you to know that, you know, as I said, our court administrator and fiscal director have been informing us of that as the years go on. We have not, people have retired, we have not replaced them. We have tried to give additional duties to our existing staff to try to trim that budget against the expenses that we were seeing increase throughout the year. We did submit a tax budget, a projected budget for two thousand twenty-six that would be three hundred thousand more than we had in last year. It was from fourteen point two million to fourteen point five or six, what we were projecting because of those increased expenses. But we have been talking. We have not been replacing staff. We've been trying to trim where we can, and it is our, our discussions and our hopes that we can at least stay where we were at last year and not have any additional...
I think Commissioner Radel said that last year. He pretty much, because sales, tax, our sales and tax incomes flat. We made a decision to refund back to the taxpayers seventeen point two million dollars in regards to our, with the homestead exemption, and we took the hit. And in order to fix that hit, we did some maneuvering with the inside millage so it didn't affect the budget for the commissioners' departments, okay? Because we're the ones that took probably, at county, it was the schools that really were more affected in regards to what we did. And we're also looking at other tax cuts also for next year, which we won't discuss yet. I want to keep at that one hour. Can you guys talk, because I like Turning Point. Can you guys touch on Turning Point a little bit? Because I do, I like it.
One of our twenty-four seven facilities.
Can you talk about that real quick?
So, so Turning Point Shelter is a twenty-four seven facility, and it is a short-term stay facility for youth. It's for children that are abused, neglected, independent, domestic violence within the home, or other reasons why a juvenile might need to be placed there. We currently work with Lorain County Children's Services. We have a contract with them where, for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so with that contract, they can place their juveniles there. What we have seen is when it's a Children's Services placement, the juveniles are there, are staying at the resident, the residential placement longer than when it's someone in the community. This is a facility that is short, it's meant to be for short term. It's no more than fourteen days. A juvenile cannot be there for more than fourteen days. But during that time, we have a social worker on staff that works with the family to create safety plans so that the juvenile can safely return to the home or to another placement. And this is really a way that we can also ensure that a youth isn't put in the detention home when they can be placed in a family-like structure. So that's...
Well, and I'll just say, you know, I've heard stories from other judges across the state about children that are sleeping at their Children's Services lobbies or things because there, there's no, there's an emergency and there's no temporary placement that they can find. And fortunately, because of this facility, we don't have that kind of situation in Lorain County. And there are emergencies where there just cannot be temporary placement or housing found for a juvenile, and we have a place to keep them safe and warm.
It sounds like, it's like a huge asset to the community.
It is.
It really is.
But those, that sticks out, too, because those expenses in four years went up one hundred twenty percent. Not counting healthcare. We have to play apples to apples.
Can you explain, it's my understanding we cut costs or trimmed costs with respect to our staffing as we have the DH staff coming over?
Well, sorry, I, some, we always look for ways to trim budgets, trim costs. So one of the things that I know that we did is we used to have more staff there, but we don't always have children there. We don't, it can be empty. So it made no sense to us to have three staff or even two staff there when it's empty. So we looked at it, we, and this was some time ago, we looked at it, we realized there is definitely a place that we can move things around. So we are now, we have our complex down there. I'm pretty sure you all are familiar with it. We have Turning Point. We have the Assessment Center. We have the Detention Home. We call it our little complex, the Juvenile Complex. So now what we do is we are communicating and sharing staff within those. So if we have a juvenile who, at two in the morning, CPS is calling us and we need a juvenile, a placement, so we always have someone there in case that happens, and then we would pull from our detention home staff if we're able to. We would pull for, from our other crossroad staff, whatever staff is available so that they could come over, so that we didn't, so we're not paying for more staff than we need. So we are shifting around, cross-training so that we can do those things, so we could save money. So that's just a side issue on the Turning Point expenses.
Trying to get the people at the Turning Point up to the detention home over a short staff, like we talked about already.
Well, to me, it's what Commissioner Radel said. If, you know, if we can just stay on what we did last year, we'd be fine, right? I mean, that's, the best news I just heard was when you guys said that.
That's the goal. That's the goal.
If all, if everyone can do that, then these will be real easy. But I have a feeling that it's not gonna be the case, especially with Tom in the room.
Well, we'll just set the tone then. We're first, and yeah.
But also, as you go forward, you've mentioned the detention home, and Turning Point is now part of that. But I'd like, I'd like us to have some conversation after we get through this budget process on the whole issue of the juvenile detention and services, because as you know, we're going forward with planning the new jail. And we haven't even presumed to understand what you need for requirements and services and spaces. But what we have provided for in the jail, without compromising the safety of the juveniles, is to do shared services at the jail. So we've sized it, and we've located the floor plan in such a way that we could add a totally separate, there wouldn't be a door or a window in common, but there'd be a way to do food service and laundry and that kind of stuff for your programming. And so if we can get over the hurdle on the jail, just know that the juvenile home is, in many cases, in worse shape than the jail. We know it, okay? And we're, we're trying to apply, you know, plan for that as we go forward. You have to excuse me, I had some dental work, and I'm, I'm not, I have to retrain my tongue.
I would like to also note, though, that we did apply for a grant this year for twenty-eight million dollars to go towards the cost of building a new detention home.
We're ready. If you got a check.
Yeah, we applied.
You gotta check, we're ready.
We actually worked with the commissioners to complete that grant, and we submitted that. That's currently pending. So hopefully, that's one way that we can take the burn it off of the general fund.
Have you worked with our community development director?
It was with your grant writer.
Our grant writer? Okay, you are working, okay.
And one of the grants we did receive this year was a therapist counselor to have access to the, for the juveniles that are in the detention home to have access to the council for mental health issues, trying to avoid, you know, that situation where they're going to hospitals and causing us to be understaffed. So we, we got a grant for a counselor who is there and working with the juveniles in the detention home. So that's being paid for through grant money. We also had a grant a few years ago, four hundred twenty-five thousand for our Assessment Diversion Center, which tries to avoid a juvenile getting into the juvenile detention or juvenile system. So they triage a child who's gonna be going the wrong way with their family, try to get them connected with services, mental health services, substance abuse services, whatever it is, and keep them out of the system. And although there's really not a number we can put on that, we, you do feel that having that Assessment Resource Center and triaging those cases and diverting those children away from the juvenile system, court system, has, has been a savings to us.
Out of curiosity, is, you guys are saying with the Juvenile Detention Center, I've had conversations with Children's Services and Children Family First in reference to the at-risk beds. Is that part of the juvenile services with you guys as well? Is that part of your budget? Because I was under the understanding it was under their budget and the expansion of potentially a detention center. I was saying, why wouldn't you combine and add these beds? Because some of it crosses over, obviously, into domestic, is what I'm seeing, hearing.
So our Turning Point Shelter, we do have a seventy-two hour bed available for some of the agencies for crisis stabilization. However, I don't know that the detention home would be for a juvenile, for someone involved with Children's Services or Family First Council unless they have delinquency charges.
Well, I'm thinking of them combined on one campus in a set, but separate.
Well, that's how it is right now. If you, if you, we have the detention home, and then you walk down the hill, and there's Turning Point. So that's how the layout is right now. I don't, I don't know if that was discussed when we applied for the grant.
Well, like, in Children's Services, somebody is very combative and, or very, let's say, disabled, and they need specialty help, and a lot of times they have to transport them or find a bed for them because they're at risk and there's no beds available, and they're paying two thousand dollars to three thousand dollars a day.
I, I'm assuming, and I hate to assume, but we're talking about, like, not what we have here in Lorain County necessarily. We're talking about, no, I mean, what we have.
That's why I was trying to coordinate between the two because...
DR doesn't do that, right?
Well, we do. Here, here's an example. What we, what we do, like, with delinquencies, and maybe I'm a little off on what Family First is talking about. Say I am sentencing a juvenile who's charged with rape, F1, very serious. That juvenile, when they're sentenced, if they're sentenced to, say, O D Y S, that, I look at that as that at-risk kind of free, we don't necessarily pay for that. O D Y S pays for that because of the high level. So, and I don't know what term they use for that, but, public safety bed, thank you. So say I detain some, an F4, a lower level. That starts coming out of Lorain County budget, our budget, our money, versus that public safety bed. So I think that's what Family First is talking about, like, some type of public safety bed. But that's usually like a behavioral, mental health facility that Applewood or some of these other agencies would have. The detention home doesn't have that. Turning Point is not that. So that's more mental health. That's out of what, we, we hope and ask for children to go to those facilities. We try to get them there, but we are not that entity. We don't do that.
I was just seeing there's a difference between, I was trying to make sure that that's what it was because it sounded like there could be or possibly an overlap there, and based on the children's, mostly the children's services.
I will say that we do have beds available, like I said, with Children's Services. They pay. However, we have criteria for the facility. So some of the behaviors that juveniles may experience that would require a higher level of care would disqualify them from being in our facility. So we, we take as much as we can, but there are some kids out there whose needs are just too significant that they can't be met at Turning Point, so they do need some of those higher level facilities.
Thank you.
We're kinda at that one hour point, so I don't want to take up, anybody? The main thing is, I just, we want to have the, number one, educate the public, okay? You know, and number two, make sure that our people are talking. And the best news I got out of this is you guys are hopefully gonna be at the same as last year, right? That's, that's pretty good news, because I think that's where we're at, right? Were we at about, what, eighty-six? Or eighty? Oh, last year? So if that, so if everybody can stay, if everybody in the county can stay at eighty-six, I think we'll be okay for twenty-six. Hey, how's that?
Well, we are here if you have any questions. If you have any questions or anything, let us know. We're gonna go back out to the rain and sleep.
Todd, can you pause and turn this off for a second before Orlando gets up there? I'm looking at Todd right now.
Yeah, we do need, I mean, we will pause.
Okay, pause it?
This is Tuesday, November eighteen, twenty twenty-five. It is a budget work session with the clerk of courts.
Yeah, I know.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. So you're just getting this probably for the first time too, looking at what we gave you?
That's correct, yes.
Well, thanks for the one point one.
You're very welcome.
Want you to know, I had it in my, I had it in my file for today. Don't forget. The letter he sent in July, he's not taking an increase the rest of the state is taking. We're doing okay.
Nice job.
Thank you. And as I stated in that letter, um, so the legislature did pass an increase in title fee transactions that's gonna go into effect January first of twenty twenty-six from fifteen dollars to eighteen dollars. That three dollar increase, all of that money is going to Ohio State Highway Patrol Fund. So as I stated in that letter, none of that money would be staying in any county that's going to fund the State Highway Patrol. There is a provision in there that the, um, Board of Commissioners can raise the fee an additional five dollars. Um, and that additional five dollars would go to the clerk of court, um, for that county. Um, and as I stated in the letter, we're not asking the board to pass that resolution. Um, we are doing very well. Um, in, in September, I think September thirtieth, um, District Chair of the Ohio Clerk of Courts Association, I held a, a, an annual meeting, yeah, over in Vermillion. And we had about eight counties come out for that, including Cuyahoga, Cuyahoga County, who's not even in our, um, district. And we, one of the highlights where we were talking about was our MA collections program in our legal division, but then we had a Q and A session, but I wanted to get into auto title with them too. And I, you know, told my fellow clerk of courts because there's a big push, um, for that increase, that five dollar increase to go, um, just statewide, period. Um, and that hasn't happened yet. It, that could happen, but you know, just to kinda let them know, I've been in this job for a little bit of time now that, you know, you have to make some tough calls and, uh, that they need to look at their operations in auto title and look at, um, how many transactions they're doing. Transactions are down statewide. Um, since COVID, I think the price of a new vehicles went up almost forty percent now. And a lot of people just can't afford cars. So transactions are down statewide. Um, some counties that were, uh, in the black and donating to their general fund can't do it anymore and some of them are in the red. You know, I told them, take a look at their operations, some of the things that, that we did to cut costs. We went from four offices to two, uh, and then also, uh, the user activity reports. Um, our system in auto title is called ATPS Blue System and it's, it's run through the state of Ohio. And, um, but you can garner a lot of information from that. And one of the things we did is we were able to go into our user activity reports. So we know how many title transfers and what type of transfer each employee is, is doing. So we know per hour, um, how many transactions that, uh, that you should be doing and not all transactions are the same. If you, uh, transfer a title to counter, which we call a casual sale, it takes more time. But a lot of our dealers are using electronic titling, um, mostly through dealer track and those you can put out quicker. But we know, we have a report run, you know, weekly that we go over with our employees. You know, we know, not everyone can be a star performer, but we want everyone to be at least in that mid-range where you're putting out the same production as everyone else. And, you know, a lot of my fellow clerks didn't even realize that you could do that because you gotta know what your employees are doing. Uh, and if someone's doing a great job, you wanna commend them and someone's struggling, you wanna coach them up. And maybe they need some retraining or, um, show them some, have them trained with someone who's, who's doing a great job. So there's a lot of information there. Um, the one thing that, that everyone's dealing with, um, not just transactions being down, but in both divisions, or just the cost of doing business has just really went up so much. And you guys know that is, you guys have a much larger responsibility and budget than any of us do as a clerk of court. But just the expenses for office supplies and equipment has just really went up. So, um, but that goes back to my point too. The more offices that you have, the more expensive that those things become. So, um, we're gonna hopefully continue doing well. Um, those cost savings continue to pay dividends. I know this year was a record donation and as, as long as things remain, uh, steady in the economy, um, we hope to even break that record, you know, more as we go forward with our donation of the general fund. So.
So out of your budget, what, how do you divide, what, what's the ballpark? You, you've got your clerk of courts with the, you know, doing the paperwork and so forth through the judges and stuff. And then you've got the titles and all the, all the rest of that stuff. How, how, how does that break down as far as, is it like sixty, forty or?
Sure. So our general division budget is only our legal division. Our auto title division is not funded by the general fund at all. We pay everything in that division, including, uh, employees hospitalization as well. So that is what's called a special revenue division. So we basically run on your user fees. So it, it's totally separate from our general fund. Um, so it's, you know, it's basically, I, I oversee two totally func, two total different functions between our legal and auto title division. And our employees, um, only work in one division or the other. There, we had three employees that were paid out of both because they did work in both. And those were our senior management employees. One of them is my chief deputy, Elisa Liu, who's here with me today. Elisa's our chief deputy clerk, but also serves as our human resources coordinator. So she does all onboarding, offboarding, benefits, pay for both divisions. So she's what's called a split employee. Our other split employee is Shawna Scott, who's our operations manager and our business manager. So she's our operations manager as far as what we're doing on the floor. And, and she still oversees one division in legal, but then for auto title, she takes care of all of our bills, our lease payments, our purchases for any supplies go through her. We had a third employee that was also split, um, our director of operations slash staff attorney. And one of the reasons as we get into our, our legal division budget that we were able to cut our budget from twenty-five to twenty-six is that position was eliminated this year. I eliminated that position mid-year. Um, and basically, uh, my chief deputy, Elisa, my operations manager, myself and my title division manager, manager Yolanda Burick, we took on those responsibilities and we were able to, uh, eliminate that position. So, um, but yeah, they're two separate divisions, Commissioner, and against, uh, the auto title division is, is not, it has nothing to do with the general fund. It runs on its own.
Well, you touched on something that we've been looking at and it shows up as the, the special revenue fund is kind of a, you know, nobody knows what that means. But, you know, thank you for taking the time here at, at the public meeting to explain that that means you, the fees that you generate pay for your costs and that doesn't come out of the general fund.
That's correct. And those fees are set forth by the state legislature in Ohio revised code. So I can't set fees for auto title other than that change that is, is out there right now that we're not gonna be pursuing an increase. Um, we, and, but we also offer, which by statute I do not need to, which is passport applications through the US State Department. So by offering passport applications, we offer the photo and then we get a percentage of a passport application every time we take one. So even though that's not something we have to offer by statute, it's another revenue driver into that division, which also helps us run that division and create surplus funds. Another thing that we do that isn't by statute in that division is watercraft, um, registration. So when you come in, we, we need to do watercraft, um, title transfers, but then through, after I took office through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, we got approved to offer registrations for watercraft too. So we're a one-stop shop in Lorain County for watercraft, title transfer and registration. And as we are, stand here as the ninth largest county in the state of Ohio, and as you, you all know more than anyone, we're one of the few counties that are actually growing. But we're ninth in population, but we're fifth in, um, watercraft registration, hence our location in Lake Erie.
Right.
So, um, that's.
That's a little bit to do with it.
Yes, that's a service that we do well on. It brings in more revenue too. And it's something that I think the community appreciates that we do have a lot of voters in Lorain County.
Hey Tom, on, on the subject of special revenue, just to kind of close that circle. So could you, uh, talk a little bit about the other special revenue, the, the computer, the complete computer, what, what those funds are and what you're able to use those funds for?
Sure. So our clerk computerization fund is also a special revenue. And again, those fees, they're part of the filing fees when a new case is filed, um, and collections as well. Um, we have, uh, we have a lot of responsibility to computerize, um, our legal, and that's for our legal division only, uh, the clerk computerization. And that's for hardware, software, um, some counties use it also for IT as well. Um, we, we primarily use it for our computerization, both hardware and software for our legal division. Um, and that also includes maintenance and hosting for our case management system as well comes out of that fee. So it's, um, it's very, it's a narrow scope on what you can use it for. Um, there was some legislation passed in twenty twenty-three, um, in the past when a clerk of, clerk of court of common pleas, um, felt the need to spend out of the clerk computerization fund, they had to, for both, we have one for the general division and domestic relations court, we had to get an order. We had to get an order signed by the administrative judge in either court to spend those fees. The legislation that passed in twenty twenty-three removed that layer for the clerk of court of common pleas. The legislator passed that law signed by the governor that the clerk of court of common pleas will determine on their own the needs for that clerk computerization fund. And we do not need an order signed by the court anymore. But it's very narrow, very narrow in scope and scope on what we can use it for. And we are launching a new case management system in December with the courts. It's going to have electronic filing and our fees are going to go up too with maintenance and hosting. And we actually are the computers that we had right now for most of our employees. Were not compatible with the new system, which is an internet-based system. And the computers were five or six years old. I forget which Windows layer they had.
Windows ten, we couldn't upgrade it to eleven, which is where we needed them to be.
So we just purchased new computers out of the clerk computerization for that too. So, and our, and our general fund.
I know when we started talking about this four years ago about trying to combine internet services and everything, I know you were very receptive to that. And I appreciate that, unfortunately due to some things that happened in August of twenty-one, that never went forward. Now that we went through the breach and company that we hired with our bucks to help protect and build that fort of protection. And also at that same time we're doing that, there was a little battle going on between you and the judges. And is that what you're just referring to with December, what's coming out is, because I think, I think we ended up going with what the judges wanted, which probably wasn't the best. But I mean, where are you at on that?
Well, they actually, the judges actually switched course.
Oh, did they?
And they didn't go with the initial system that they were going to go with, what we all had a meeting on a couple of years ago. I don't think Commissioner Gallagher was here for that. But they actually went with a more robust system that's internet-based now. Same company, but completely different software. The one they were going to go with was not internet-based and it wasn't scalable. This one now is internet-based. It's scalable.
But is it going to be operating in the protection that we have created here?
Yes. Yes. So regardless of which system, the software that we go with, and that's something that is always, you know, worked out between clerk of court and the judges. Hosting that system is a duty of the clerk of the court of common pleas. There are technically the court's records, but I'm the custodian as the clerk of those records. That's one of the main reasons that this, that this job, you know, is an elected position too. So that those, those records are not where the court holds them. They're held by a separate entity.
And that's all being paid through this computer account?
Yes.
All of it?
The hosting and maintenance of those records are all paid through the clerk computerization account. That's correct. And we, those costs are going to go up because
What, what costs? The cost to use the system or the cost?
The, to maintain and host it.
Yeah, but that's going to all come out of your, that's not touching general fund, right?
That's correct. It'll all be paid through the clerk computerization fund.
Now, looking at your costs though, from twenty-one, it's gone up twenty-eight percent, or twenty-eight percent, without including hospitalization.
Yeah. And I'd like to get in that. I want to finish one question that you had as far as the hosting. So not only now are we, the way we're set up right now, are we going to host our case management system? But because our servers were more updated than the juvenile courts, we're also going to host juvenile court, their case management system too, which at some point will be the same one that we're in now. So we're hosting both, just for cost savings for them and for us to put them on our server. So as far as the
Before, before you go on.
Yeah, absolutely.
With the case management, are there going to be, with it being a new system, are there upfront, like one-time expenses that are coming with this?
So the cost of the system, right now, the system that we're going to be launching, hopefully next month, was paid for by both court divisions and some grant money too.
Then when you say court divisions, are the court divisions paying it from the general fund that we gave the court?
I can't answer that. I know that they do have, as far as the filing
No, I'm glad you're sticking around.
Okay.
So did that money come from other grants then for, for the courts? Okay, good. Okay.
Yeah. And that, Kristin's with domestic relations. I'm not sure about the general division because they do have, you guys have special project. You have case management special project and so does the general division, which is another part of the filing fee tree that goes in there. So they, I don't know what they have in there or how much they use for any
But what I've always heard about Lorain County is that we're not online. Everyone around, and that's why I'm wondering, will you be able to, will you be able to charge fees and that in order to offset? So it's now that we're coming into the twenty percent tree?
So what we're going to have is, it's going to be an internet-based case management system. And there are some mandates that have been put forth by the legislator on the clerk of the court of common pleas to have those dockets online. And in civil cases, we will have the documents and images online as well. So you'll be able to see that case. Right now, we are
The public will be able to, right?
Correct.
I know it'll be like pace where lawyers would be the only ones allowed.
No, no.
Against the totally public?
It would be, the case will be mostly, not a hundred percent, but mostly digital now. Where you'll be able to go on and see that case right online. And in civil cases, you'll be able to see images that were also presented in that case as well. So yes, it's going to be a big leap for us. And, and the legislator put these mandates on the clerk of the court of common pleas to try to push everyone along a little bit too. So, but as I've told you guys before, the one tough part is, you know, and I also oversee auto title. We have one statewide system that the state of Ohio runs and is great. If you have a problem, you send in a ticket. They'll either fix it remote or they'll send a team out to your county to fix your problem. There has been a push from both the clerk of court of common pleas and the judges to maybe get a statewide system for the legal division too. Because really it's like the wild, wild west right now. Every county has a different case management system. They charge you exorbitant fees. They're for-profit companies and I understand that they need to stay in business. Technology changes so quickly. You know, something you had now that you thought was, you know, cutting edge in a couple of years, it could be obsolete. So if there was a statewide system, think how much better it would be for the public, for the attorneys that practice all over the state of Ohio as well. So we're not there yet, but at some point I would, as in this position, I think it would be a real benefit for the state if they decided to do something like that. So as far as our fees, Commissioner Moore, so you mentioned twenty twenty-one, and that was our actual spend. Right? That's, that wasn't what our approved budget was.
Correct. We're looking at just spend.
Yeah, just spend. So the last spend that you have was in twenty twenty-four was one, two, six, three. Now, I'd like to point out in twenty twenty-one, we were still in the midst of this pandemic, okay? Well, I just want to throw how that, how that affected us too. Our case filings were, were down at that point. Especially our civil docket was really down. You know, when you're talking about workers comp, medical malpractice, a lot of the plaintiff-type cases there were down. And also, you know, part of our budget is correlated with what the courts are doing. You didn't have as many trials then. So our witness fees that we pay for, for witnesses and such, those numbers were down too. So there is some correlation there between what we, what was happening then after the pandemic. I mean, the civil filings just exploded. I mean, the
Well, I didn't go back to eighteen though. I could have gone, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm actually kind of leading you towards is you gave back a one point one million, okay? We put in here the history of what you've given us, a million, two fifty, seven fifty million. And I think that money comes out of the certificate of title administration.
Totally separate from the legal division.
And the only reason you do, you do that out of the kindness of your heart, really. You don't have to do that, do you?
No.
Okay. But you're sitting on four, over four million dollars sitting there. And what I'm wondering is, I know you can give that back to us as a general fund. But how can we, because we, we need to figure out a way to cut, you know, there's eleven million dollar ask in the whole county. And, you know, if you're here, the judge is pretty much says, the D R said, we can stay at what we spent last year. Okay? And you're, you're one of the few, well, you're, you're bringing in cash. Jail doesn't bring in cash, you know? Nine one one doesn't bring in cash, but they have their own levy, you know? Certain agencies are just government service by law, we have to provide, and they're not revenue generating entities. So what I'm wondering is, is there any, anything you can do to, to project maybe for twenty twenty-six, something?
So
To make it a little bit less painful for other departments?
Yes, I'll give you a two, two-pointing answer to that. One is first the legal division, which again is totally separate from, from auto title. Our budget request for twenty twenty-six went down from our budget request for twenty twenty-five. Our budget request in our approved budget for twenty twenty-five was one point eight seven three million. And our requested budget for twenty twenty-six now is one eight five three. So we cut that down. That's with hospitalization included in there because we have to, that's part of our budget now. So
Keeping it pretty much the same from last year.
Yes, yeah, but, but a cut. We don't know what our spend is going to be this year because again, we have some baked-in things that we have to have in our budget, including witness fees and some other accounts that
But you have a fine history here.
Yeah, yeah, but you can see that we don't usually don't use everything. And then there is some money from legal that we send back at the end of the year that we don't use in our budget. So
Well, when people see that when we meet at the investment advisory committee and we see the couple hundred million sitting there, this is what part of that is. Which is, you know, agent, you know, officials like yourself do have excess cash sitting there. And we're just trying to figure out, how can we do that to help mitigate some of our expenses?
Sure. And, and, and to just, before I go into auto title, I think the reason that we have to have that in our budgets for our general fund because no one has a crystal ball on how much we're going to have to spend that year. And I think the last thing that the commissioners want is to have all these departments and elected officials coming back and asking for appropriations over and over again during the year because we're running short.
Well, that's stopping this year.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I mean. So we don't give back a lot, but I think we do a pretty good job of getting pretty close to what we need for the year in our, in our general fund division. And then whatever we don't use comes back. But if we cut that too much and, you know, cut our capital costs for some of the things we need in the office. If we cut salary too much, if we cut witness fees too much and postage, then we're going to be constantly coming back and asking for money during the year. We always live within our budget in our general fund.
You only spend a hundred, you're at, it's only a hundred thousand dollars you spend on what you just explained, not common witness fees.
Yeah.
Your other expenses is not that much.
It's
Hundred thousand.
Yeah. But if, if we're spending without hospitalization about one point
Salaries, I'm not talking salaries.
Yeah, I know, I know. But if we're spending total without hospitalization, about one point three is almost ten percent of our budget. So, I mean, it's still significant. I mean, it's still
What I'm trying to figure out is, is there a way to reduce the, your budget request and fill it in with your, instead of giving us a refund at the end of the year? Remember how we talked earlier?
Yeah. Yeah, so
And I finally gave you your seven fifty, like five, what was it, five, six months we did that?
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
So, well, here's, here's
We're trying to help out other, other officials.
So when I, when I donate that money to the board, it's, you guys determine how you're going to spend that money. You know, I, I hand that to the board and I know it helps support other county divisions and we feel good about, you know, the help. As I said earlier, as long as the economy doesn't, you know, go down significantly, I want to donate hopefully even more next year than we donated this year. And Commissioner Redell asked me a year or two ago, when we had one of our budget meetings, if I could maybe project earlier in the year what we will be donating rather than give you an amount like in November. And we did that this past year. And I believe it was in June when I gave my first budget for the general fund and auto title. I also told you at that point that we would be donating, you know, one point one million. Now we'll do the same next year. And as long as things
Do you understand what you think? You'll have a better feel?
You know, May or June, if you guys, sometimes that budget we were asked by the end of May to give it to you guys, I think, then last year it was June. Whenever you guys ask for that, I'll give you that projection. And as long as things don't go bad, I hope to break our record again. And like I told you earlier.
When you, the one point one million this year, you know, what was the source of those funds?
Auto title, division, user fees and passport application and photo user fees.
So it was all out of your special revenue fund?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's the one, obviously you can't predict, you know?
Right. And I can't, like I said, we only have two employees that are actually paid out of both because they work in both. No one else does. And I, I can't, other than that, can't co, can't co-mingle those. No. I can't say, you know, we want to buy something in legal, I'm going to use something from auto title. I can't.
Sitting on four million dollars just sitting there.
And that's money that I'm donating to you guys rather than
Twenty-five percent of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Or not fifty.
Well, I told you, I, I am definitely open to, at the beginning of this, I told you that I hope to break that record again and donate more money next year. Because now I have a better feel of where we're at.
But that reserve is entirely generated by the special revenue?
That is correct. Yes.
And what's the annual, what's the annual salary budget for the, for the title department?
I don't think it's in this list here.
It should be. Yeah. It was in our budget that we presented to you.
We don't have control over that, so they don't give it to us.
Yeah, so twenty twenty-six, our budget is one point eight three six million.
No, we're talking about
For certificate of title. It's one point three six.
The size of the special revenue reserve compared to the annual operating cost, it's three years of salary. It's three years of operating cost.
About two. We just donated one point one, so take that off of that amount that you're showing we had. That one point one, I believe we transferred it already to Casey, didn't we?
It's going, I think, today.
Today, yeah. So that's really three point four that we have. So it's less, it's not, not even double what we have. It's still considerably a lot of money. But it's, that one point one came off of that top figure that Commissioner Moore mentioned. So
Do you feel you need to keep two years of, of operating budget in reserve?
I feel that now that we've really settled into the two offices and we had to do some renovations in our main auto title office. And I did that because I'm also looking to bring in more services in that division, possibly through the federal government. I've applied for some other services that could be revenue drivers. Right now, I'm on a waiting list with the federal government. But if we do get approved for those services, I have the space ready to go to provide those that we can bring in some more revenue too. But, you know, there's different projections that our association feels that you should have or shouldn't have. But I feel comfortable that our costs are now have been stabilized. And I'm hoping to, like I said, donate even more these coming years. Hopefully we can keep breaking records on what we donate to you. And I'm going to do that in the earlier part like you requested a few years ago.
That couple of years ago when, when I first got here. You know, our goal is to get this thing to not only take out those requests for extra money that, you know, we don't want to be so tight, we pull that in. But we don't want to be so loose that all of a sudden we end up with windfall at the end of the year. And there's projects that would have, that were starving for some, for some support in January, February, March and April. So our job is to try and forecast, including that return to the general fund so that we can budget that and put it to work somewhere that, because your customers are the same as our customers, the same as the court they're all our, they're all our customers.
Sure.
Okay? And while it gets easy to look at it and say, well, this is the clerk's office and this is the court office and the rest of it. We're all just different, different representatives serving the same people. So if we can, if we're saving, if we're saving that money at the clerk's office and we're spending it in, you know, not, into the sheriff's office, it's the same, it's the same public we're serving. So
I agree, Commissioner. And I like to remind people in the public as well because as we all look at that donation as something positive, you know, I also have some people in the community tell me, why are you giving that money to the commissioners? Why don't you spend that money, you know? And I tell them that, you know, our job, we take an oath to do, to follow, you know, the state of Ohio constitution, the US constitution. And, and, and we are, should be servant leaders. And, and also our budget, you mentioned the sheriff's office. I said office, not department. I'm used to that. You know, the whole justice system, I think is like, what, seventy percent of the general fund budget, if not more? I mean, so, you know, when we're donating, we're helping out, you know, the whole justice system. One thing we can do, Commissioner, we already are letting you know in May or June what our donation is going to be. We can donate it then if you'd like, rather than the end of the year. You guys can tell me if you would rather have it earlier in the year.
Yeah, right now, we'll take it early.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'm more than, we're letting you know at that point, you know, when, what we're going to donate, we can you know, when, what we're gonna donate, we can donate it after we present that if you would like. I mean, we wanna help out and be a team player too. And I, I told you, I think we're in a good position to, to
But you're talking about split employees. And I don't, I don't know if you caught us talking earlier with the D R, where we're looking at creating like a countywide H R department, a countywide I T department, which you are receptive to.
Sure.
And it's basically, we don't wanna take it over, but you, you're, you'd be still in charge and working with our department. And we're trying to consolidate all those services, at least to help mitigate some. It may not be a big savings because you're so lean right now, but it's something that kinda hopefully lead by example for those that may push, push back on us.
Sure. I think that, you know, some of the centralized services make sense. I felt with I T, we, we came on board and a lot of people were skeptical that, you know, I was just going with county I T and not having one dedicated systems manager for the clerk's office. And I think Elisa will agree. It's worked out well, hasn't it?
They've been great.
We, our staff is very happy with county I T. They're
Well, did you catch, like, when they tried to breach you and within eleven minutes or something, you guys found it?
Right.
Our, our vendor was on it and
Yep.
Absolutely.
Which is how it should be, when everybody's under the fort or the protection of the commissioner.
Yes. So we're, we're, we're very happy with county I T. And that saved us, you know, quite a bit of money as well.
You guys go down, that's like the system.
Yes, yeah, we're, we're, we're hosting it. So, and, and we're gonna be hosting juvenile as well, so it needs to be protected. And county I T works very well with domestic relations, county I T and the prosecutor's office and, and the general division as well. As far as the other shared services, I agree. You know, Elisa wears a lot of hats. I mean, she's our chief deputy clerk and, like I said, she also serves as our human resources coordinator. And, you know, there are a lot of things that come up that we do lean on the prosecutor's office as our statutory counsel. But I think having a more robust, uh, human resource department would help, I think, every division in the county. We've run into some issues, you know, like even on some clarification on some F M L A, you know, issues that we wanted to make sure we were doing things right. There are a lot of intricacies involved with that law. And we've reached out and, you know, there's not a lot of outside support for us there. So we would like to see that become a little bit more robust.
We appreciate your support there because that's exactly the model we're trying to do is that you know your staff, you do the onboarding, you manage the hospitalization, you manage the, the P E R S. You manage all of that and those day-to-day payroll and H R issues. And there's, there's two levels to H R. There's the day-to-day. And then there's the, what do we do with F M L A? What do we do with, you know, discrimination or, or if somebody's got a harassment claim or those kind of things?
Higher level.
Right. There, there's that whole level of individual issues, tort issues, if you will. And we, we'd like to pull those in-house and provide single guidance because when you got twelve departments, you could be managing them twelve different ways. But the one thing is, if it's not the right way, we're on the lawsuit right, right below you.
Right, you're right. That's a good point, Commissioner. And for us, on those higher-end issues between the prosecutor's office and a firm that you guys use that's available to us as well, they have been very helpful, you know, as, as we update policy and procedures, um, um, different job classifications. They've helped us with that too, both Mike.
We wanna eliminate that opportunity for someone to shop and say, well, hey, boss, you, you told me no on this, but, you know, so-and-so over in another department, they got the answer yes.
Right.
We're trying to eliminate that inconsistency because that's, that, that's a, that's a source of mistrust and it's a source of, of financial, you know, liability, so.
And, and on top of that, as you guys are well aware, because you guys have both of these situations too. You know, I have the one division that's part of a bargaining unit and another division that's not.
Right.
So we have to make sure that we're following the contract and then also following policy and procedures in the other, in the other division too, so. But yes, you are correct. And, you know, even with us, you know, eliminating a senior management position, you know, those decisions, you know, aren't easy decisions to make. But we knew that we needed to really find more ways to, to try to keep us where we were at for this year or actually lower our budget a little bit. And, you know, everyone's been really, operating as a team in, in our both divisions.
You do a very nice job. I appreciate what you do. I see what you do. You're keeping expenses down, yet you, you could, you have the opportunity to spend money that's in surplus and you're, you're giving it back. And that is very much appreciated and it's very clear in everything you're doing. So I wanna thank you for that and, and, and helping us out for next year. Would, you know, it'd be nice to see it, see another record out there and thanks for, thanks for what you're doing there. I do appreciate it.
Sure, and then if you guys wanna let me know, because I will have that number in our May or, you know, whatever, when the tax budgets do, if you guys would rather have that earlier in the year, we'd be, you know, more than happy to do that.
As we attack the budget right now for the next seven to ten days, I think Casey, maybe we put that in parentheses that, if we anticipate that, because nobody gets all their money in January one. Once we vote on the budget, because we don't have it, you know, the property taxes come in and what have you. So we're, we don't, everybody doesn't get all their money, money. We also, as a board, if we see something that may not work out, we have the ability to amend everybody's budget and say, sorry, guys, this isn't working out.
Okay.
So that, just because we're passing it in December, doesn't mean we can't amend it. So it'd be nice to say, okay, knowing that we got a million coming in May, maybe we can, you know, crunch, that's gonna be your job to crunch it and figure it out, okay, so.
Well, you can count on us for contributing at least what we contributed this year. I'll tell you that, okay?
I like that four-point-six or three-point-five. Looking at that number.
Yo, and, and
Three-point-five-two-three.
And, and the fact that, you know, also you guys show appreciation, that means a lot to our whole staff. I mean, when you guys show that appreciation, because our, our staff really do work hard. And I hear from people all over the county, when they come into our auto title division and legal, how they're treated by our employees and you get a smile and good service. And our employees also look at the news and it's nice when, when the board appreciates, you know, because they're the ones that are, that are the engine to make this happen.
I appreciate when I leave Tuesday, they're still here at night.
Yeah, that's right.
I think the Lorraine County people appreciate the fact that they can come in after hours.
I, I love the added services you're adding on that you, you don't have to do that even. And you're applying for it and it's, and it's revenue source for the county. Thanks for that again, you know, that.
I kinda messed up, can you send that? This is what we're all talking about. Usually I do that before we, I guess this is our second meeting, so.
You put that up on?
Yeah, can, was that Todd back there? Or maybe nobody's back there, so. Wake him up.
That's okay.
All right, so this is, this is the document we were all working off of in regards to the clerk of courts. So, just so that people can screenshot it and call you up and say, hire me or whatever they wanna say. Thanks, Todd.
Good.
I'd just like to close too, and, and, and I'm sure Kristen can appreciate that and, and you guys can as well. Just the cost of doing business, how much it's went up in the last five years. We needed some heavy-duty copiers and scanners in twenty-twenty. And we went through and looked at probably five or six different companies. I know more about copiers than I really ever wanted to. And we end up going with a, a copier that was really strong. Ninety copies per minute. And it cost us a little over nine thousand dollars each for these copiers. And we had another copier go down this year, so we had to replace it. This is in our legal division. And so we went back to that company and some other state contracted companies to look at the cost. And the cost of the copier that we bought in twenty-twenty doubled in price. Literally doubled. And I called the rep and I said, this is double the price that we paid in twenty-twenty. And she says, well, you better get it now because it's getting ready to go up another fifteen percent. And we were just like, we just couldn't believe it. So we dug in and shopped and we found another company. We, the, the higher end of the, of the copier was at seventy worth per minute. And we were able to buy that for about ten to fifteen percent more than the other one initially cost us. But we, that same copier doubled in price. I mean, it's just amazing how the cost of doing businesses went up.
Just a plug for our shared services though. Remember that those copiers, we learned this, this, this past year, they're all part of the security of the network. Because if you're on, if you're on the network and you're using a copier and you can send and send stuff, faxes and all that other stuff, that copier needs to be part of the security network. And so we'll be looking for, for ways to try and standardize hardware stuff so that we can, we can service and repair and do stuff in-house. Because, you know, we, that's one of the things, we, we could have five people that know how to do something. But if we've got fifteen different computers out there, you know, it makes it that much more difficult to have staff and backup staff. So the hardware piece of it, we need to, we need to work better together. Make sure that we're all, you know, if we find a particular brand or something, it's, we don't, it's not bad to have two or three, but to have fifteen different brands is a challenge for staff.
Sure.
Agreed.
You good, Casey? You good?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Are you related to Kenny?
I'm his better half.
Very good.
Congratulations.
I was upset. I live out in Atlanta. And I thought, I thought he was, I